To the meeting for December 8, 2025, and we can start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please, Alja.
Mike Johnson?
Here.
Doris Lebrunche.
Yeah.
Adam Lint.
Here.
Emily Trahan.
Here.
Do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest tonight? I see none. Before we start public comment, I will read that very interesting public comment rules. So, anyone wishing to speak, the speakers must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Since meetings are broadcast and recorded, persons wishing to speak must use the public podium and give their full name and their district or address, although an address is not required. Comments must be limited to issues on the current agenda. Public comment on matters not related to the town's business will not be allowed, as to ensure all meetings are carried out in a productive and efficient manner, in keeping with the interest of who attend and participate in a council meeting. All comments and questions must be directed to the chair or through the chair. The public comment period is intended for public input only. Counselors' responses are not required, and the session should not become a back-and-forth discussion or debate, nor are counselors required to answer questions or to respond in any manner. Counselors may take issues and comments under advisement and may address them during the meeting when appropriate discussion of that specific agenda item occurs. Per state law, found 30- A MRS 2702, complaints or charges made against an individual employee will not be permitted or discussed in public session. We encourage compliments to address such, I'm sorry, complainants to address such comments by directly contacting the town manager for a follow-up and review. Comments related to the following will be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, specific situations that are in litigation, including those in which the town is party, and personnel matters. If residents, if a resident wishes to address issues not on the agenda, they are encouraged to contact their district counselor, the counselor chair, at-large counselors, or any other counselor. If the counselor deems the issue appropriate for further discussion and may be placed on the agenda, at which time, public comment will be permitted. Decorum, meetings are to be conducted with order and efficiency. Civility and proper decorum are expected at all times to allow for the proper ability to conduct town business. Individuals are required and expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner to everyone in attendance. Swearing, shouting, et cetera, will not be tolerated. Any individual who engages in disruptive or disorderly behavior then interferes with the meeting will be asked to stop. If the behavior continues, the individual may be asked to leave or be removed from the meeting if necessary. And now, we open it up to public comment. Would anybody like to speak?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
My name is Darcy Good, and I live at 7 Russo Street in District 3, and I live on the corner of Russo Street and South Karan Street, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbors to ask for a four-way stop. We currently have two stop signs on Russo Street and two big yellow crosswalk signs on South Karan Street. Most drivers are respectful of the speed limit, but not all. Those big yellow crosswalk signs are not a deterrent. One of my neighbors puts a yellow driveway tent sign in their yard to remind people to slow down, and that's not a deterrent either. Two blocks north of my house, there is a four-way stop at the corner of South Karan and St. John Street. I have noticed that people will slow down even if they don't stop. At the opposite end of South Karan Street is Halifax Street. The corner where I live is right in the middle between St. John Street and Halifax Street, and you can build up to a fairly high speed by the time you get to my house from either end. St. John Church also has a grassy area where children play and people walk their dogs, and it is not unusual to see people walking or riding their bikes on South Karan and around our neighborhood. One of our Winslow teachers started a biking club for teenagers of all abilities, and some of them have never ridden a bike, and they ride in this neighborhood and on South Karan. We have families with small children and grandchildren living on South Karan. Kids walk to school, walk to Winslow School by way of South Karan Street. Our neighborhood is very busy at intermittent times of the day for a variety of reasons. Now, let me tell you what I see when I look out of my windows or while I'm working in my yard, and occasionally when I back out of my driveway. A few people are not respectful of the speed limit on that stretch of the road that I'm talking about. I have seen vehicles traveling from Halifax Street, north on Grand Street, take a left on Russo Street, and never hit the brakes. So, the elevation of our house lot, the house itself, and the speed factor contribute to a blind spot in the front of my house, which faces Russo Street. And so, here's the thing that really scares me. I see kids walking down Russo Street on their way to school, and they will cross at any point along Russo Street, and they'll walk through that grassy lot at St. John's. But if they walk across the street in front of my house, and somebody takes a left-hand turn there and doesn't hit the brakes, I'm very worried about their safety. So, anyway, just that the rate of speed at that corner, and that, I'm just asking for a four-way stop, and, you know, me and my neighbors just want to see everyone be safe. And that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Darcy.
You can come on up.
Hello, my name is Joshua Taylor, and I live at 61 Cushman Road. I saw on the agenda that there's something about an events committee. I'm not sure if you all saw, but this week, there was a post on what's happening in Winslow, about doing some stuff with the Winslow Bridge to liven up Winslow a little bit, to make it look like Christmas, right? The feedback I got from that was incredible. The people that wanted to come together and be a part of that was really incredible. I got a lot of messages from businesses that want to help donate. I got a lot of people saying that they'd really like to be part of a committee to do events in Winslow, like we used to have 4th of July and all these other events. So, you know, I just felt, I felt compelled to come to share that, because it's been a week-long thing of people coming together in Winslow, which, I grew up in Winslow, and that's what we do. We come together as a town and do things like this, and it shows that people do care about Winslow. So, I just felt compelled to come here and to hear what's going to be talked about with that. Thank you.
What was your name again?
Thank you, Josh.
My name is Joshua Taylor.
Oh, thank you.
Ray?
My name is Ray Karen. I live on 19 Cor Street. Thanks for, this is too high, that's for sure, but I'm here representing the Friends of Fort Halifax tonight. So, I know there's a discussion item later regarding the Fort Halifax Park, so having a lot of history over the last 20, 25 years down, and I thought that Mark invited me here and thought that doing a small history on the Fort Halifax Park and how we got to where everything is right now might be appropriate here. I'm kind of a historian, and asking to do 5,000 years of Fort Halifax history in three minutes is almost, you know, very, very hard on a historian, but we start with this photograph right here. You could see, in the 1960s, the late 1960s, this was Fort Halifax Park. And you can see the blockhouse right here, Woodbury Motor Company, which eventually went across the street, and then you can see the cars lined up here. You can see actually a railroad, that spur that ran down the middle of Fort Halifax Park, too, at the same time. Next slide. And of course, who is there first? Whoops, a little too fast. Who is, oh, there we go, that's good. Who is there first, like, in the 1600s? It was all the Indian tribes, Norwegians, the Taconics, the Kushnics, the Sagittarhocks, the Hockas, and the Endukus. And you could see that us, we were the Taconics, and so that's where the Sebastian Creek River and the Kennebec River came together. Huge, huge Indian village there, and was there for many, many years. Next. And then, they were, in 1650, we started getting trading posts there, Clark and Lek had a trading post here. You could see the fort blockhouse here, that was there. And across the river, on the Sebastian Creek side, on where Lithgow Street now, there was another one there. In the start of the Indian Wars, probably around, oh, 1660, 1680, these two people didn't fare so well during that time, and so they were killed by the Native Americans, and that started the, that didn't start it, but that was the start of the Indian Wars. There were seven Indians. Four next. And you can see that between 1675 and 16, 1760, they were, in this case, I just put down six of the Indian Wars. The last of the Indian Wars is the French and Indian War, which lasted 1755 to 1760. This was when Fort Halifax was constructed in reference to the French coming down from Canada and Quebec, and the English coming up from Boston. So, of course, we were part at the time of Massachusetts, and British, under British control here.
Three minutes.
And this is Fort Halifax. This is the existing blockhouse now. You can see the offices quarters, the second blockhouse, the gatehouse, the enlisters' headquarters, and up where Fort Hill Cemetery is up there, that was one of the redouts that was there, that was put there as a lookout going up to Sebastian Creek River. If you go to the back of Fort Halifax, Fort Cemetery, you could see very, almost a half a mile to a mile up to Sebastian Creek River there. It's a beautiful, and this one was near at the north end of Bellevue Street, and that was looking up to Kennebec River. Next. And you can see, whoops, a little too fast. I'm fast, but not that fast. This is General Winslow, and that is Lithgow. So, he was the British general that came up, designed the fort, came up for a little while, got sick and went back. Lithgow was the one who really did the fort, manufactured the fort, and then stayed at the fort during its entital. Go ahead, next. And you can see just some pictures. It's important a little bit that the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution, we'll go with that, over that in just a few minutes. Go ahead. And you can see in 19, whoops, a little faster. In 1990, this is what the park really looked like. The parking lot that was there was in the place where the original fort was, and we hadn't constructed the new parking lot yet, but that was where the parking lot was. And we were going to go into some renovations in just a few minutes, few seconds here. Go ahead, next. And you can see after the renovate, whoops, after the renovations, what we did was we moved the parking lot from here over to here where it is right now, and we made this footpath. We added some gazebos. So, that took the parking lot off the original fort footprint and put it over there so we could do a lot of the work that was necessary for reconstruction of the actual fort.
Ray, I mean, are you, are you almost finished?
Yeah, we're almost done.
Because you only have three minutes.
Stan Matthews, go ahead. Go ahead, we'll keep going, keep going. Daughters of the American Revolution. This is, go ahead, back one. This is kind of like the, what we're talking about, I think in that discussion, where we had the flagpole for the fort, and about 10 years ago, we installed a new flagpole here. Part of the members of the Friends of Fort Halifax said that the American and the state flag were not in a prominent enough position, so that they thought that a flagpole put near the monument was a better location, and that would enhance. So, we, the Friends of Fort Halifax, through the state, because the fort is not on town property, it is property of the state of Maine. It's 100 by 100, and then the rest of it is town of Winslow land, but because of the renovations that were done with public money, the state has to approve everything that we do here. So, the flagpoles, anything we do on that has to be approved by the state, and then the town. Go ahead, next. And then, you can see the, whoops, the flagpole here and the flagpole there, the granite markers there. Go ahead. And then, at Fort Weston, they fly many flags. They fly in the pine tree flag, the British ensign flag. Go ahead, next. And at Fort, this is Matthew Hamilton, the Northern Regional State Park Manager, Department of, he's in charge of the blockhouse and everything that goes on. I talked to him last week about what flies. At Fort William Henry at Colonial Pembroke, they fly the British, the French, and the American flags. The American flag is higher and slightly larger than the others, and we prefer to do this consistently. And next, and that's a picture of Fort William Henry, which is flying the French flag and then the British flag there. So, in the spring, I had contacted the...
Ray, I'm so sorry. It's going way beyond the three minutes.
Okay, so, just 10 seconds.
We're going to have a, yeah, sure.
I contacted the state. I noticed that the flags are so ragged at the, at the blockhouse. Could you replace the American and the state flag there? And they didn't get it, they didn't get a chance to yet. So, for Fort Halifax days, we said, why don't we put up the fort flag, which is a British fort flag, which is consistent with the history of the Fort Halifax blockhouse. So, and then, we put up the American flag, of course, on the prominent place, which is, I don't know if it's the same height or slightly higher, but the, always, when we change flags down there through the town, in the state, we make the flag bigger, the American flag bigger, and we make, make sure that the fort flag is smaller, so that we respect the American flag. If we thought that there was any controversy, whatever, about disrespecting of the flag, we wouldn't have done it. There's a lot of people in the Friends of Fort Halifax that have done thousands and thousands of hours. We have veterans, we have members of the Daughters of the American Revolution there. We are trying to enhance the educational and everything, and there's options that you guys can discuss about how to display the flag, whether it's in the fort, whether it's on the flagpole or whatever. So, I think there's differently ways to appease everybody in this situation.
Thank you, Ray.
Sorry for the, for the exten-.
Is there anybody else?
Perfect. Hi. Hi, my name's Corinne Bushy, and I am District 1, and I am here, excuse my voice. I'm here because of the Christmas tree idea that I put out on the magic world of Facebook. I did this back in, I believe it was October I started with it. I don't have pictures, but I have a lot of passion for the community. I've lived in Winslow for over 30 years. When I moved here, my father didn't like it, because we lived in Waterville, but I told him we could see my house where I grew up from my roof, so we were good. He, too, got a passion for it. He was at my house all the time. They went to our parades. I walked in many of the 4th of July parades. I have a strong community. I just want to pull it together, much to Josh, who's trying to do things with the bridge, which I'm excited about as well. I think that we should have something into his comments about the park. It's not used in, I don't think it's used the way it should be. It's a great educational, sorry, I'm nervous, I don't do this. It's a great education, yeah, that word. It's great for education. It's great for just going and, you know, taking a few minutes to just be in the park and relax. It's beautiful there. I go down there quite a bit, and I just thought that for Christmas, where we've had so much of, like, just with Winslow, it's just gone in different directions, I think it'd be a really good thing to bring people together. It doesn't have to be as big as the parade. It, you know, it doesn't have to be all of that. It could be something, something simple. My suggestion was plant a tree. It doesn't have to be a huge tree, but a small tree, and then watch it grow for the whole community. In 1931, that's when Rockefeller Center's first tree came up, and it was just the same thing. They just put a tree in the middle of a place, and then they built around it. And I think that's what we can do as a community, is put a tree someplace. We can, I've had so many, so much response, even in the last one I just did a couple days ago, oh my God, the response was crazy. We have reindeer that are in our area that we can actually have. The only ones in Maine. I've had vendors reach out to me that they want to volunteer different things. I've had people just reach out and say, wow, I just really love this idea, and I look forward to what's going to grow with it, and see if the community can all come together and have that happen. Picture a big fire pit with nice chairs and snow and hot chocolate, and that's all I've got. So, thank you for your time.
And your name again is?
Corinne Bushy.
Corinne.
Do you need me to spell it?
Yes, please.
C-O-R-I-N-N-E. And it's B-O-U-C-H-E-R.
Nice French name, thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Denise Whitman, 1266 Augusta Road in Winslow. I actually came here in the same manner of Corinne. On behalf of my business for Anywheres, we want to do anything we can to make this Christmas event work. I am a Christmas fanatic. You'll see Christmas trees and stockings up at my house all year. Everybody loves, hates it, but we can do tables, we can donate brewing stations, we can do chairs. Unfortunately, we can't do the big tents, because where it gets so cold, they'll crack and break, and I can't afford that, but we can do pop-ups, and I'm willing to do anything we can to make this event big and happen. So, I just want to put it out there that I'm committed to help anyway, again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Steve Natto. I live in Trindale Road in Winslow. I guess this flag deal is part of it, was stood out by me. Thank you for Ray describing everything up there about the history. That is great. I mean, everybody should know the history of the town and the blockhouse and what happened. But seeing that red flag up there is really spotting my gut. It just, I just can't take it. I mean, this... I mean, there should be the American flag up there. It's always been the American flag up there with the main flag underneath. And I understand the history. If we could do something with that flag and put it on the building in a case or something and explaining the flag of the, you know, the Union Jack flag, it'd be great. And that way we'd have our flag up there with the main flag and it would be towards the left, which it's supposed to be the left of everything, which it isn't right now. I mean, the way I look at it is the flag is, the prominent flag is, is the British flag and it shouldn't be. The American flag should be the prominent flag. So if we could change that, it'd be great. So the first thing you see in the park is not that red flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, can we have a, a motion for the approval of the minutes for November 10th, 2025, as presented?
So move.
And a vote.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Under communications, we have boards and committee appointments. Can I have a motion to approve Rocky gravel to the assessment review board?
Set a move.
Second.
What, does anybody want to explain what the assessment review board even is?
I can do that, I think.
Thank you.
So if the assessor assesses your property and you ask for an abatement and she denies that, you can then appeal that to the assessment review board. And I think there's four or five people on that committee and they can review to see if her assessment was incorrect.
Who are the others?
I don't remember.
Okay.
But they're there.
But they're there. I think Deb Russell is one of them. Rocky, I think Mike Hevner is or was one of them. I can look it up and tell you.
Okay, thank you.
You're fine. So can we please have a vote for a, to approve Rocky on the assessment review board?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
So on the next one, it's, excuse me, the districting commission that we have to put together. We've got three people. I think it calls for five positions. But I think tonight we can at least, if we could, get a motion to approve the three that have, that are listed and then continue on to look for two more. Although I did hear, somebody is interested. A counselor is interested in being on that.
Yes, I'm, I'm interested in joining that.
So can we add Lee to that? Audra?
Um, I, sure, I guess.
Okay, then can we have a motion to accept four? Scott Holtz, Esther Miller, Charles Lambert and Lee Trahan? Which will leave one vacant spot for anybody out there who's interested. And can we have a motion to approve?
Set a move.
Second.
And a vote?
If, if I may?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Should I abstain from voting or?
Hmm. Yeah.
Probably.
It still passes unanimously anyway.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with one extension.
Through the chair. I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have, do we have to have five before we actually get started?
I think it calls for five positions.
Okay, thank you.
In the charter, I believe. Next up, we have presentation by the Waterville Opportunity Recovery and Resource Center, and I will hand that over to Doris.
Hi. I could not be more honored to represent and introduce this next speaker. Her name is Courtney Wilford. She works closely with the Waterville P D. And I see she's got a number of guest speakers with her. So I'm excited for you all to learn what she has to bring to the area.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yes, thank you so much for inviting me. So my name is Courtney Wilford. I work closely with the Waterville P D. I work for a company.
In the mic. Talk closer to the, sorry.
Is that better?
Yes.
So I work for a company called Sweetser. You guys have maybe heard of them. And we are with a program called Options, which is opiate prevention through intensive naloxone and safety. And I am in the process of trying to get a recovery center and resource center up and running in Waterville. And the reason why I'm here in Winslow is because Waterville and Winslow are closely related. We're all community members. And I believe that it would benefit not only Waterville, but the surrounding areas as well. So I do have handouts if anybody wants one. I didn't do any fancy. Yeah, you can pass them around. So this is my vision. I'm passionate about it. I'm passionate about recovery. I'm passionate about the community that I serve. So at the heart of our community, the Waterville Opportunities Recovery and Resource Center, our work is dedicated to supporting individuals and families on their journey to wellness and personal growth. Our center offers a safe, welcoming environment where everyone can find help, hope and the tools needed to build a brighter future. Our mission, we empower individuals affected by life-changing challenges through compassionate support, education and access to vital resources. Together, we can foster resilience, inspire change and strengthen our community. The services that we are going to offer, peer support groups, recovery coaching, educational workshops, resource navigation, family support, community events, community collaboration with providers, access to hygiene materials and a safe place for all. So yeah. The community building that I have right now is located on 21 Elm Street. It's being donated by a very nice gentleman named Kevin Joseph. And he's donated the building. So I do have Andrew, who is a peer recovery coach. I have Todd Stevens, who is the licensed social worker for Waterville P D. While they're not able to talk, they're here to support. And then I have Officer Rob Boulay as well, that I work closely with as well. Does anybody have any questions or concerns that I can maybe address while I'm here?
I'm not sure. You're trying to, you have a building, so you're trying to get a recovery center. What are you looking for from Winslow?
Collaboration, that's it. Just community awareness, nothing more.
So we would send, if Winslow came upon people that needed this, this help? You would send them to the Waterville Recovery?
Yes, yeah. So, and it's not just for people in recovery. Like, we would offer services for anybody in the community that needs it, that's aging, if it's education, if it's youth support, things like that. So it's not just for people in recovery, although that's my niche and Andrew's niche. You know, again, it's for community. So it's not just for people in recovery.
We also do the homeless as well.
Yes, the homeless is something that obviously is, is a huge concern for a lot of people, especially, you know, in the Waterville, Winslow area. I think we, a lot of us see the same community members, the unhoused community. So this would offer them a safe place throughout the day so they're not loitering in people's lawns or businesses. They're able to come here, access resources, try to better themselves at the center. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Is this particular center, is it going to be staffed 24/7?
It's not going to, so it's not going to be an overnight shelter. It is, it is just through the day. I'm still honestly working all of this out. This is like baby steps where I'm trying to just get the community awareness, community involved in this. So as of right now, everybody is volunteer basis. So, you know, I don't know what that's going to look like in the future, but for right now, it's just going to be like a nine to five. Like, you can access the center from nine to five, but it will never be an overnight shelter.
Through the chair. Is there another, as far as what you're doing right now, is it in motion now? Or is it planning to be in motion in another month or another two weeks?
So I'm working on that right now. So I, it's going to be grant funded. So that's something that I have to work on. And the grant funding for resource and recovery centers right now is closed. It closed in September. So now I have to kind of wait and like, see what other options I have. I've talked with the mayor of Waterville to see if we can work on the opiate settlement funding that they've received, to see if I can get some funding that way. But the building has already been donated and we're working on the 501(c)(3), which is a nonprofit.
Okay, when you do have that information, could you come back here and give us that information on when this is going to start in? And then we can take it from there and of course, get it out to the public as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I'm looking for like soft, open, by the time the building's renovated and everything, it would be probably September of, of next year.
September.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will there be a presence of like 12-step programs in there?
Yes, so I will, we'll communicate and collaborate with like 12-step, A A, N A, offer peer recovery options. The company that I work for now, we offer, all of our services are also free. So we offer peer recovery coaching, peer recovery support, substance use counseling as well. Anything else? Thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you, Courtney. I'd like, through the chair, I'd like to think of this as Waterville and Winslow working together. We're two separate communities, yet with one commitment to serving and offering hope, help and healing to people in need of that assistance.
Thank you.
Real quick, Fran, I did get the, the assessment review board currently has Kim Clifton and Justin Smith on it. The other members have expired, so, and then Rocky. So we're still two members short on that.
How often do they, do they have to get reappointed?
It's every three years. And they're only on a, on call basis whenever it's needed.
So, but we do need two more?
We still need two more, yes. Hopefully by when the new year starts, I can go through all of my list and see what we still need and hopefully get some more information out there for people that might want to join more committees.
Thank you so much. Audra? Okay, next up, reports of committees and commissions. We'll start with the town manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. Department heads have completed their FY '27 budget submissions and will be meeting with the town manager and finance director ahead of February workshops. So we're going to be starting to actually meet one-on-one this month. For staffing, the town continues to accept applications for the full-time code enforcement officer position. In the interim, we still have Chief Murphy doing occupancies. And we have Jeff Drew through K V cog. He's contracted to assist us once a week. He's been handling everything else that Chief Murphy can't do. The one thing he doesn't do is electrical, but master electricians, if you're licensed, you could pull those anyway through the town. For general work, the Winslow Junior High School site cleanup is proceeding as planned. There was a little bit of delay about a month ago with the cleanup. They kicked it back to, or kicked it to around Thanksgiving. And then, of course, with the weather, it slowed down the process a little bit, but the entire building's down. They're still cleaning it out. So as it stands, the town has collected and stored the bricks set aside by EnviroVantage. It's now at Public Works. Thank you, Paul, for picking those up. And I'm going to be coordinating with the school department and to figure out when we're going to actually distribute these bricks out, how we're going to do it. So just be on standby for that as well. Sunset Heights, the town held a pre-bid conference on November 19th. Bid opening is scheduled for December 11th with the bidding process expected to run approximately four weeks. Chaffey Brook, the town will also hold a pre-construction meeting with T-Buck and the engineering team on December 11th. So Thursday's going to be a busy day. For dangerous and/or vacant buildings, the code enforcement assessor officers, offices continue to update the inventory of vacant or potentially vacant properties. There are currently four registered vacant properties, one commercial, three residential. An additional 11 properties require further verification or enforcement, and two cases have been resolved so far. For projects and proposals, I'm going to throw a little, a little thing out that Fran's going to touch upon later. But as part of the town's continued efforts to address the long-term needs of the community, the town manager's office is forming an evaluation committee to begin formally assessing options and requirements for a new library and community center. The strategic initiative is a direct response to Winslow's 2020 comprehensive plan. This has been something that's been discussed by a lot of individuals. It was some years back that a feasibility study was actually done in town regarding a community center. The library is aging. I've been talking to Alisa a lot regarding this building that we're actually in. So we're really excited to tackle this. It's a huge undertaking. This is going to be years in the making. But the sooner we start it, the sooner we can get it done. So I'm excited to follow up. And like I said, the chair will follow up on that as well. Finally, internships. The town manager's office is partnering with Thomas College's Director of Professional and Career Development to create a sustained internship program. This program will be entirely credit-based for students and therefore does not require any financial contribution from the town. I interviewed every department head. Every single person I spoke to has a very strong need and desire to work with Thomas College and actually do this internship program. So I'm really excited to kickstart this as well. Perfect world, we start in the spring, most likely in the fall. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other reports from any other departments?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
So, hi there, Chief Murphy, Winslow Fire. Was brought up here, asked by Fran and Mike both. There's been continued scrutiny on, you know, the interwebs where everybody thinks that ambulance services don't make money. And you're right, they don't. However, if you do it right and you have a passion for it, after paying everything off as of, excuse me, as of last week, after paying people, maintenance, equipment, telephones, dues, everything, training and whatnot, the town has taken in, in the black, $43,847.99. So everything that we've used through the ambulance, we've gotten back in, with insurance, at no cost to the town residents, other than the manpower that you pay for.
Can you repeat that number for me? I couldn't write that fast. Thank you.
Has gone into the general fund.
I just want to say, I think, you know, when it all started way back, whether or not we should have an ambulance service, it was just a simple need at the time. It was a need and it was feasible, but there was a lot of fear from people that are your taxpayers' dollars going to pay for it? And what Mike, I'm sorry, chief is saying is, we haven't spent any taxpayers' money for this ambulance service that when you call, you are getting that ambulance in quick, quick time. You're getting top-notch care and you're going to pay an ambulance no matter who goes. So to hear that in one month, I believe it was one month.
Well, this is total, right. This is one month, but this is like.
But I also heard from Sheri that in the month of November, they grossed in the black $31,000.
Yes, ma'am.
In one month. They made $31,000 in the month of November.
And that is with inter-facility transfers as well.
Right. Right. So it is working and nobody thought we were going to be millionaires. No, we just wanted to, even if we broke even at no cost to the taxpayers, it's a win-win. You're getting the help you need and your taxes aren't paying for it. So it's a great, great service and you're doing a great job, Mike. Thank you.
And we've added three more per diem paramedics. So we rounded the staff out to 10. So hopefully our, I don't want to say lack thereof, but laps where we have to call other towns shouldn't happen very often anymore.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mike. Have we had a lot more transfers since, since we've lost the hospital?
They pick up. It's, again, it's who can, who is available and who is ready to do it. We have done, we do a lot of the AEMT level that other services will pick up the paramedic because they get called first, but we'll do the AEMT. And we're, I hop in and do it. I've done a couple of maternity trips from Theta ACH. Haven't had to catch any babies yet. But no, it's going really well. The crews are excited and we continue to train monthly on everything that we're doing. So.
Thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome.
If I may, through the chair, question?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Yeah.
At the end of your presentation, you mentioned something about not counting the cost of, of the employees or the staff?
Right. So we had this discussion a while ago when you guys did the budget last year. You guys agreed to take on the minimum of three full-time personnel. So with that being said, when you guys said that the minimum staffing was going to be three, the town took over that responsibility for the minimum staffing of three. That's what we had talked about and that's what we agreed, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You agreed to it.
I just, I wanted some clarification if anyone was wondering if we were trying to, you know, shift it from, you know, away from EMS to putting the burden on the fire department budget versus the ambulance service.
We don't have two separate budgets anymore.
Okay.
Right. Yep.
I wanted the, the public to know that we were trying to be as transparent as possible.
No, absolutely. And all the firefighters and, you know, paramedics and EMTs and AMTs are all firefighters to start with. So, and anytime an ambulance goes out or more than one, if I have two that go to Augusta, which happens frequently lately, we do a backfill, which either I come in or other off-duty members come in. So that helps as well. So we have three ambulances and we've had at least one in, in town while two are going to Augusta and that's happened quite a bit lately. Where both ambulances are heading to Augusta and I come in from home and cover and then somebody else comes in and the ambulance, the third ambulance is covered. So there's no laps.
All right. Thank you.
Any other department heads? Can we have a motion to approve all reports as presented?
So move.
Second.
And a vote.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
And Adam Lint?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Moving on to new business, resolution number 31-2025, approval of application renewal for an automobile graveyard slash junkyard permit for Adam Penny. I'm sorry, DBAR and K auto salvage on the Morro Road. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
A question. I have, on the approval and the application renewal, is that, that's not just an automobile graveyard. I believe it's a recycling.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can we, can we do the motion and then get into the discussion part of it? Just do the motion.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And now discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Now, I know it says here renewal automobile graveyard junkyard, but they also have a recycling. They advertise. Is that included in this, this permit? Because it's recycling. They weigh, they, they have tractor trailer trucks that go there constantly with crushed cars. They weigh them. They stay there and then after that, they're distributed somewheres else. Have we approved that?
We are approving the state license. So this, this is the state's license.
Okay. But he has a recycling. Is that included in this particular thing?
Is an automobile graveyard slash junkyard the same thing as a salvage? Does anybody know?
I don't think it is.
I can't answer that question.
I know it's been, it's been going on for years.
And I know that when they were approved, then I was told that during the time that the roads were posted, they could use a one wrecker with one vehicle on it to get it to the, to the yard. But they've been right through the time that it was during posted time. And I think Paul could tell me, tell me, I mean, tell me more about it. But they had tractor trailer trucks loaded with crushed cars going in and on that road and that road is getting torn up because of it. Do you know of it, Paul? That they had tractor trailer trucks going on there?
They've been hauling, but most of my knowledge that they were doing it on the road are frozen.
Well, there's, there's more than that because. Okay. Well, that's why I'm concerned because we're talking about automobile graveyard junkyard permit. That's fine. But when we have a recycling thing and they're destroying the road that we just paved not that long ago, I think three years ago. And if you go down that road, you can see it and there's proof that they've been going on that road even when it's posted and they're going on there with these tractor trailer trucks six and seven times a day. So I think we ought to look into that and find out if that recycling is part of this.
We can, we can table the resolution.
Okay.
But we should vote for that because we already went into a motion to approve. So can I have a motion to table resolution?
So move.
Second.
And a vote.
I'm sorry, Doris was the second. Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion to table resolution 31-2025 passes five to zero. And you just want to, so I can make sure we have it correct for the next meeting. You want to know if they have a recycling license?
That's correct.
And anything you want to know about their roads?
Yes. In fact, what they were allowed to do. In fact, I was told they were only allowed to have one car on the wrecker, on the body during the time it was posted. But they have been going continuously with tractor trailer trucks full of cars that were crushed.
And who told you that? So I can reach out to that person or?
He doesn't have.
I'll give you that, I'll give you that name.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to make sure I have the right information for you.
No problem.
Also. Move on to resolution number 32-2025, authorization for the town manager to accept a donation from the Bill and Joan Alphonde Family Foundation to benefit the Winslow Public Library for the amount of $1,000.
So moved. Second.
And is there a discussion? Would you like to say something about what that it's all about? Mark?
Lisa?
The Alphons have very generously given us $1,000 to support our programming. $200 of that will go towards getting tickets for the children's museum in Waterville that we will incorporate into our spring break program. And the other $800 is going to go to support the Library Pass program that we've run that provides free tickets to various places like the Botanical Gardens in Rockland, the Planetarium at the University of Southern Maine, the Children's Discovery Museum in Bangor. And Winslow residents get those tickets for free. We can issue a certain number every day and it helps with STEM and creativity and our patrons don't have to pay anything. So for those people who are on a very limited budget, it's a real, very, very popular program.
Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And did we get a vote?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Move on to resolution number 33, 2025, approval of the on-premise liquor license renewal for the Point After located at 252 China Road, Winslow. Do I have a first?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion needed for that?
Everybody says there's no complaints there.
No.
Police has no issues.
And could we have a vote, please?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lint?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Moving on under discussion items. We start with Lee, with the Charter Review Committee and their recommendations, which we have to publicly speak about.
Yes. This letter was dated October 13th, 2025. On behalf of the Winslow Charter Review Committee, we respectfully submit our findings and recommendations to the Winslow Town Council. The Charter Committee met on three occasions to review, to review the current charter. We had a very good group that worked well together and got the required tasks done in a timely manner. Our voting, our voting procedures are inconsistent, are inconsistent from year to year. We feel it's important that Article 9, Section 903 be a priority upon research with the town manager and town clerk. We were not able to establish that the town council has adopted clear voting procedures in regards to write-in votes. We feel there needs to be a clear, a clear process. Also during the review process, it came to our attention that redistricting Article 9, Section 905 has not been done since 2011. This is long overdue. We appreciate you entrusting us with this important task. If any question, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to any, any of us for clarification. Thank you. Deb Russell, the chair, myself as the vice chair, Garrett Buzzell, Roy Lord, Nick Weiss, Tom Welch and Jerry Kerian. One of the first items, starting from the beginning, was, it was recommended by myself on 8/26, Article 2, Section 206, Number 2 and Number 3, regarding vacancies for forfeitures and, and filling vacancies. And in the original charter, it was listed that discussion regarding excessive absences from town council meetings. And the recommended changes were to include that three absences, more than three consecutive regular meetings unless deemed a medically necessary by the council. Justification to have a plan in place in the event of excessive absences. Do we want to discuss these one at a time?
I think you should. Yeah. I think we do. That's why we have to do it publicly.
Okay.
I'm not jumping down this rabbit hole, are you? I think the last time it was questioned about absences, a council person being absent, it got into quite a show. So you just got, the wording on, the way it's worded is so vague. There is no set rule on how long a sitting counselor can be absent from their seat. So to get guidance on that, it should be placed in here and that's what Lee was just saying. Currently it's three, three absences, three consecutive meetings, which is three months missing your seat. So I think the wording needs to be, is it three months? Is it longer? Or does medically necessary even have to be in there? Because the question is how, how long you can be absent from a seat? Anybody have any ideas how they want it written?
And also something else to consider through the chair is, should we decide to someday go back to two meetings a month? That would be, three consecutive meetings would be a six-week timeframe.
That's a good point.
If I may, I know, I guess it wasn't written exactly. Well, three consecutive regular meetings. If we were to add, I know we had discussed in the committee, that would be three consecutive months, regardless of however many meetings were in, in the months.
So you think it should say three months instead of three?
Three consecutive months.
Three consecutive.
Worth of regular meetings.
Regular.
We, I know we wanted to put regular meetings in there just because, you know, in the event that we go to two meetings or we have budgets, workshops and things like that.
Through the chair, I have something to add to that. And the reason why this is being done, because in the past, we didn't know what to do when there was a three-to-three tie vote and you needed that seventh vote. And if we have somebody that's absent for three consecutive meetings, what do we do in that point there? Who has that last vote? I think, I'm not sure if that goes through, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that the town manager would have a vote in it. It doesn't. So I don't, what do we do if we have a tie vote and somebody is absent for three months?
If it's a tie vote, it fails.
It fails. Okay.
Well, I think that's why we put in that part about the medical exemption because if someone was in a hospital or not able to make it for medical reasons, they could still zoom in.
Yeah. I know in the past, you know, this wasn't told to me that it didn't pass. I was trying to find out what happens when there's a tie vote and nobody said anything. This is why it's coming up now. I asked that question and it was terrible. And I was accused, I was accused of a lot of things and it was nothing to do with trying to remove a town councilman.
I think what you need to look at in this, in this thing is how long does a seat go vacant and not be represented? So that's what we need to consider because can it be six months? Because the way it's written right now, you could be absent for a year, six months, nine months. There's nothing. So you need to put a number on how long you can be absent from a seat and not being that vote that's needed or that representation of that district. So does medically necessary even have to be in there? What's your point? You're either absent or you're not. So how do we reword that? Is it three consecutive months of regular meetings like Lee said?
I think that kind of.
That makes sense.
Clarifies it precisely.
I agree. What do you think?
Yeah, I have no issue with the three months. The medically necessary, I understand to an extent. I have Crohn's disease and if I wasn't able to make it to three meetings in a row because I was having surgery or out. But I also understand at the same time that the council and the town needs to move on and continue business. If I'm unable to do my job, then there needs to be a max term in my opinion, you know? You can go three months and then you can get medically cleared for up to six months or a year, however you want to do it. But I, it needs to be, it's hard to have an indefinite on one end.
It very much is. That's why I think it was so vague to begin with.
Yeah.
So vague to begin with.
If I was out, you know, and I wasn't getting better, there'd have to be a point where I would, you know, have to say, hey, I need to step away or somebody needs to fill in or whether we do a proxy, somebody, you know, that can come in and do a vote for somebody like myself that has medical issues, you know, that it, it really is a lot of different ways that this could.
It's hard because you got to look at, are you looking at the person you're talking about or are you looking at the position?
Right.
So that's how you have to try to.
It's hard to leave a position empty because.
And it's hard to take it away from somebody.
Right. Absolutely. If somebody, you know, I wouldn't want it taken away from me, but at the same time, I would feel necessary that I have to give it up at some point that if the town would be better without it.
Do you guys think three months is enough time? Would it make everyone feel better if we added four months? It's still a long time.
Four months is a long time to be, for a seat to be unrepresented.
It's hard for the, for the long term of it. Yeah.
Thing is, it stalls, it stalls a business that we need to carry through.
Right. For the town.
That's right.
It keeps it at a dead limbo. So is everybody okay with Lee's wording of three consecutive months of regular meetings?
I'll agree with that.
I would say three consecutive months regardless of the number of meetings.
Right. That's what regular meetings is.
That would be the three months. So if there was six meetings in three months that we scheduled, that would be three months.
Drop the, the medical necessity. But what is the plan in place to fill that seat after?
Drop the medical necessity, but what is the plan in place to fill that seat after?
It's already in the charter. So you can either have a special election, or if it's within six months, you just leave it, you leave it vacant.
Okay, I did see that.
So you can fill it at any time after that.
But the Americans with Disabilities Act, you want to check into that before?
Well, no, the charter governs the body, so your charter dictates, that's what you're saying, you're going to be above that. It's not a, you know, it's not an employee situation. This is an elected official.
I just would check.
Whatever we change, we're going to pass all through legal anyway.
Yeah, that would be my only suggestion, make sure that that's not stepping on anybody's toes or rights or anything like that.
Absolutely.
If I may, will legal determine whether it's going to be a referendum vote, or am I going to change?
This?
When I'm talking about all?
All of it, everything. Yeah, of course.
Legal will determine if it's a minor change or, okay.
Yeah, if it's an amendment, or a revision, or a word change, or whatever, absolutely, that's why we would send it, yep. So everybody's good with that one? Lee?
Yes.
Adam?
Doris?
Yes.
All right, so we're just going to say that, all five agree to that change. I'm sorry, Lee, go ahead.
No problem. Second item, recommended by Garrett Buzzell on nine twenty-three, Article Two, Section two oh eight, title, induction of town council. Originally written as clarifying the meeting location of the town council. And recommended change, the town council shall meet at the regular town council chambers. Just cleaning up and clarifying the wording.
Because the way it's written now, it says the town council shall meet at its usual place, so it should state where the meetings are.
It should add the library.
Well, we may not be here forever, but you could say town council chambers.
Okay.
Wherever that is, is where it will be.
So everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Change it to town council chambers?
Yes. Next, item three, another by Garrett Buzzell, nine twenty-three twenty-five, Article Four, Section four oh one, title, town manager qualifications. Originally, or currently, references to the town manager only addressed as the manager. And recommended, the town council shall employ the town manager herein referred to as the manager by contract for a fixed term.
So they just want to change the wording from the manager to the town manager?
To better define who is referred to as the manager.
So just wherever it says the manager in the charter, it should say the town manager, correct?
Correct.
What does everyone think?
It's fine.
Yep.
Through the Chair, if I could clarify that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It says herein referred to as the manager, so you'll still find that language saying the manager, but it'll be after that designation of it saying herein after, so you'll still see that. It's not going to just say the town manager across the board.
Right.
It'll just denote it at the top at the beginning.
Yep.
I'm sure that's probably in case we miss something, or we'll have to go back to do it all again. All right, next item, recommended by myself on ten seven, Article Six, Section six oh one, the title of, can't read that.
Zoning Board.
Oh, zoning board. Currently stated staggered terms of zoning board of appeals to be changed to two and three years staggering. Recommend that's change the term and clarify at the next election of board members. Also add in the word zoning. There shall be a zoning board of appeals. And under the justification, clarify wording and establish staggered terms for members. Currently, there are four members on this, four of the seven members that are on will term out at the same time. For instance, looking into that, if I remember correctly, there's somebody that's going to be terming out in twenty-six, and I believe there's nobody up for reelection on twenty-seven. And I believe there's those four people that will be terming out, will all be terming out in two thousand thirty. So we want to kind of establish, kind of like we do with the council and the school board, so that we're not relying on trying to get four people in one year.
Makes sense.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Yep. Mike? Doris? Sounds good. All agree?
All right, next item, recommended by Nick Weiss, nine twenty-three twenty-five, Article Seven, Section seven oh one, title, school committee. It currently states that, is that delete, deletes? Delete section, no longer relevant, delete the paragraphs, starting at however at first, and then election in the fall of two thousand twenty. And justification, no longer relevant.
It's no longer relevant because they already changed it. I believe the school boards are all staggering.
Yeah, they did a charter change, they changed the terms such as you just suggested in the last item. That was the transition language, because you have to explain how you're going to change from one to the other. So you'll need that in the other one you just discussed, so you might want to take that.
For the zoning board, you mean? To reduce the zoning board, yep, very good.
Because people that are elected for terms are elected for their three-year term, so you can't imply any changes until the next election after passing all this. So then you start the staggering process at that point. Somebody will be elected for a two-year term and so forth, and then it comes around back to a three. And it takes a few years to work for that, because Under and I have worked.
The zoning board is appointed, it's not elected.
Right, right.
Oh, that's appointed, okay.
It's the same, it would be the same, though.
But same thing, you have that transition.
Yep, yep, very good, thank you.
And the school board one, we're past all that until the last election, and then before that.
So this is just to remove that section, but we need to keep that section to use it for the zoning board process?
Well, yeah, you got to move it to the other.
Yeah. Does everybody believe, I mean, I'm sorry, agree in deleting from however on, because they've already changed all that?
Yes.
Doris? You're good?
Yep. All right, next item, recommended by myself and Nick Weiss, nine twenty-three twenty-five, Article Seven, Section seven oh two, Number Three, qualifications. It's addressing excessive absences, like I put forth for a recommended change on the town council, and recommended same as town council, is absent more than three consecutive regular months of meetings unless deemed medically necessary.
What do you think?
Well, just justification to be consistent with the absentee policy for school board as well as town council.
Don't see any reason why it could not be consistent with council. What you just approved was three months.
Regularly scheduled consecutive.
Right, regularly. Did that ultimately, no matter what the excuse is at this point?
Because I think they're just looking at the position more than the person.
Yeah. My twenty years, I don't think anybody's ever would come up against that, so it shouldn't be a big problem.
Through the Chair, Joel, did you ever have a problem with having somebody missing that long because of being sick or whatever?
I'd have to say, I don't recall that we've had anybody out for three consecutive meetings for medical reasons or otherwise, actually, so I don't think changing it would be.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
That big of an issue.
Okay.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
That's the same, that's the one we did earlier, except for the medical exemptions, right?
Yep, everything the same.
Next, next item, recommended by Garrett Buzzell, nine twenty-three twenty-five, Article Eight, Section eight oh two, untitled. Currently, annual budget should not fall to the town manager if not adopted by the town council vote. Should it remain as the previous year, or go to vote by the residents? Recommended, it says Deb to contact MMA, see the handout, and we recommend to adopt option four. If the justification, if the council doesn't accept budget, it reverts to the town manager's proposed, so that's why, so why vote? Should have a plan in place to continue doing business until the town council approves the budget.
That, we are looking into with legal at the moment, an example of that, because that sounds awfully confusing, which it is anyway, but let's say Mark presents the council the budget, we as a council sit, and we go over Mark's budget, and then we end up with the municipal budget, and then the school board comes and they present their budget. But if for some reason we don't pass the budget, it's all counted as one, the school board, the town council, it's all one, even though it's separate. So if we say no, the council loses all of the work they just did on that budget, and it would revert back to the original one that Mark sent us. So they want to remove that little middle part, and just simply, it just would, if we deny the budget, it would just revert back to the previous year's budget. And I think that's what the school goes by, too, that if it doesn't, yep, you can.
All right. Okay, as far as the town budget, the municipal side of the budget, I think you have a lot more leeway on what you can do, and I don't know all the legalities of that. On the school side, it's much more complicated, and I know Peter has met with Mark and explained some of that. And what we apparently had in our charter, I don't know how long it's been there, but apparently that became not entirely legal in regards to the school budget side of things, in regards to when school funding law was changed with consolidation that happened, whatever it was, fifteen years or so ago. Because under school funding law, twenty MSRA something, the school budget has to be, has to go to referendum, and it can only go to referendum after approval by its, by the authority of, you know, if it's on RSU, it would be their public meeting. We are a municipal school district, so it would be after the council approves the school budget. So the council has to affirmatively pass the school budget for it to go to referendum legally, so.
Wow.
Yes.
That's a big wow.
That's a big wow. So our current charter can't apply going forward with the manager budget prevailing, and then sending the school budget to referendum.
So it cannot go to, if we vote, just, if we voted no to approve the budget, you can't take it to referendum until it's approved.
You have, the council has to affirmatively approve the budget.
Wow, and that's not the way it's been working.
Well, it only happened this once.
Right, because nobody's ever voted against it.
And nobody knew that that was an issue. And, but now that we know that it's an issue, and it might be in other towns' charters too, I don't know.
It actually makes more sense.
But, but twenty MRSA, whatever it is, which is the school law portion of main law, which is thick, there's a lot to it, but we reached out to our legal to get information on this. And so the town council does have to affirmatively approve what goes to referendum, in our case. It's very specific about it, so.
Wow.
So the failing, not passing one going to the town manager's budget won't, we can't do that going forward legally. So the town, and so this idea of having a continual, a continuing resolution sort of scenario doesn't work either. You have to pass a budget, or we don't have a budget.
Right.
And then we revert to our previous budget, which is horrible on lots of accounts of what it does to the school system and our ability to plan and proceed for the next year.
Right, even if we don't approve the municipal budget?
You could technically probably just vote for the school budget and send that to referendum.
I thought you said it has to pass, though. The budget, and it's only one budget for both.
Well, for the municipal budget, that is true. I don't know, I think it might be legally possible that you could approve the school budget and send that to referendum, and then send the rest of the town budget, you know, approve the rest of the town budget later, but I don't know how that works in regards to your funding mechanisms within.
No, 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 yeah.
You know, when you have to set your taxes and your commitment and all those things.
But the big thing that you guys found out was, if for some reason, it happened again, that a council voted against the school budget, it can't go to referendum. Is that what you're saying?
If you didn't pass it affirmatively, it can't go to, it can't go to, it can't go to referendum.
Right, and they're still looking as, if we say no, it means both municipal and school doesn't pass. It's not one or the other.
Well.
It's one budget.
It's one budget.
Well, it's one budget as far as what you finally approve, but how you approve the town budget really has, you might have some leeway on what you do on the municipal side of the budget, but in regards to the school budget, it's very definitive that you have to pass a municipal school budget, you have to vote for that affirmatively. Whether you can approve that and approve the municipal side separately?
Can't.
I don't know, you know, you can't from a standpoint probably of committing your tax rules and all that. So ultimately, you probably can't from a practical standpoint. But the school budget has to be affirmatively approved before it can go to referendum.
If it was not approved, then it would go to the previous year's budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we disapprove the school budget, and we go to the previous year, and that's what we'd have to go through?
No, you still have certain mile.
Yeah.
Just a quick here, sorry, Joel.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, but I believe that with the school budget, you know, even with the town budget, I believe there's certain milestones that you have to work towards. So there's dates, whether it's like thirty days, forty-five days, or whatever, that you have to, or it might even be a couple of weeks. You still got to try to work to accomplish or achieve the budget, right? You don't just say, the town doesn't just vote no on the budget.
That's what the workshop's for.
And then the school reverts to the last year's budget. That's not how that works. You still got to try to work, right? There's got to be a compromise, right?
Yes, well, there's, well, the part you're talking about is primarily about the school budget going to referendum, as far as those timelines go. The council has to, in a municipal school budget, the council has to pass our budget affirmatively, then it would go to referendum. If it fails at referendum, now, there are some dates on that, because we have to, you know, we have our fiscal year we have to deal with as well. But if our budget fails, then there are some timelines. But if our budget fails, then there are some timelines on the certain number of days that you, there's a minimum and a maximum number of days and such to bring a budget back to referendum. If it fails at referendum, because you might pass it and it fails at the polls. So then there's a process we have to go through to bring back another budget, which you then have to vote on again at the municipal level, the council, to then send whatever that revised budget is back to referendum. But until that's done, of course, you don't have a town budget.
So you never, you never stop working on that year's budget?
You never stop working, but the...
Just revert back to the old budget? Until you come up with a new one?
Exactly.
Okay.
But you have, you have to affirmatively pass something or everything. Now, in the meantime, if it goes past July first, we're operating under the previous year's budget, and there's some legalities behind that and so forth and how that's set. But it, it's not good, because you don't know what your budget's going to be, you don't know who you can hire, what you can hire, what positions you can fill, if you're going to cut positions. So therefore, you can't hire even for positions you know they're going to be open, because now you've got seniority, you've got bumping, you've got all kinds of things that kick into place when you don't have a budget, and you don't know what's going to happen. So not having a budget on July first is, is very bad. And when you miss the hiring season over the summer, particularly early in the summer, because people want to get their jobs, you know, they're not waiting until August fifteenth.
Right, right.
You know, you want to hire good people early. And so, it's catastrophic for school systems to miss, to miss the date. It really is. So, anyway, so yes, there's a lot, some work that needs to be done on that, so the recommendation that Lee had there, as far as a continuing resolution or some sort of thing like that, won't work for the school budget.
No, and the school budget, I pretty much, this one is specifically asking if we do not approve what we call the budget, which includes the school budget.
Which includes the school.
The budget, then, right now, the way it's in the charter, it reverts back to the previous year, not even the year we're just in, or to the town manager.
Well, it goes back to your previous approved budget.
Previous, yes.
Oh, it didn't say, it doesn't say that. That's what it doesn't say in our charter.
In the same for us, so it's the previous approved budget.
Yep.
The budget you're currently working in.
Well, at that time, it's current, but if you come to July fourth, it's...
Right, right. So that's all we need to do.
You finish that year and...
We just need to change it to the town council approves until the town, it stays. It doesn't revert back to the first one he gives, gives us to work on in a couple months. Doesn't go back to his, it stays the same as the, the way the town's been running.
Right.
That's what needs to be changed in this one, that's what it means.
Sure goes back to previous town budget.
Yep.
And that is probably bad for the town in many regards, too, because obviously you have things that need to happen and commit the rolls and all those other things.
That's what's confusing.
Your hiring is probably less cyclical than ours. Ours is a very specific period of time, so it might not be as catastrophic for you, but it sure is for us.
Oh, of course it is.
Yeah.
Yep. Absolutely.
You said that...
I think we were more concerned with the municipal budget, more than the schools, with this, with this charter.
Yes, and it is all one, and if you've already got language that it reverts back, then it's really where we, we are, too.
And that's what we want.
Basically, the council has to pass a budget.
And that's what we want, too. We just want it to revert back if...
Yeah.
It didn't get approved, that's all. Because it's, it's just so vague.
Yeah.
But it really, we weren't concerned about the schools' budget as much as the municipal.
Right, yeah, and I think that's why this was, this has been overlooked, and it probably has been overlooked in other school districts.
And that's why it was so confusing. You couldn't understand, well, why are we doing this at all, if it's just going to go to referendum?
Well, and it probably was entirely legal before we started the school budget referendum process, back when consolidation came into play with Governor Baldacci, back in the day.
A good find, very good find. It's good to know.
So, but I hadn't thought much about it until we, I saw what the recommendations were that got posted, and it's like, geez, how's that going to work for us? We decided to consult with our school legal and get their input, and then I said, oh, wow, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Uh-oh.
So that's the thing, the school legal is a whole thing in itself.
Right, right.
Separate from municipal, so.
Very good.
But oftentimes, you know...
That's great, great, great information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
So, we're going to make sure we can see through legal if we can change the wording back to approved to the previous town council.
Correct.
Previously approved town council.
Previously appro, that's right.
Previously approved.
Previously approved.
Probably can also add, until the council approves the budget? Because then, once we're able to approve it, then it'll, then it'll revert back to the new budget that we approved.
Right, right, and that, and it's just that one thing, like he said, the school does it that way anyway, and like I said, we weren't concerned about the school, you guys do your own stuff.
It's, it's also on a monthly basis as well, so it's just going to carry month by month until it's approved, and then it's the new budget.
Yep, yep. Oh, that sounds good.
All right. Next item?
Yep.
Next one was recommended by Deb Russell, Article nine, section nine oh three, titled "Election Provisions." Currently, it's stating that the establishing, what exactly are the provisions of the laws of, I'm not sure whether it...
Write-in, write-in votes, right? Is that the one we're on?
Is that SM or SOM? Also determining write-in vote protocol.
Mm-hmm.
And, the recommended changes, town, town council needs to adopt the provisions, and then be specific in determining the process for declaring and, for declaring and undeclared candidates and handling of write-in votes. Justification, town council has not adopted the use of provisions of the...
State of Maine.
Oh, State of Maine, thank you. There is no clear path to our elections in regards to declared undeclared write-in votes. The last three elections have all had those write-in votes differently. It should be consistent year to year.
Just so you all know, this is being handled by legal as we, again, because myself and the past town manager, and now the current town, we've been looking at that, because it's very, it's not in there, what we follow. If somebody wants to run as a write-in, they don't have to declare, which means they don't have to tell the clerk they're planning on running, but more importantly, anybody can write anybody's name in, you've all heard, I'm just voting for Mickey Mouse. You can vote anybody's name you want, but for a vote to count, that's what we need to adopt, and that's two different state statutes on that, and we're going to look at the one where write-ins going forward will have to declare that they're right, running as a write-in. That way, because if somebody, if I'm running, and somebody decides at the last minute that they want to go as a write-in, they don't have to declare. What happens is, come time, this person's just ran around and told five hundred people, write my name and write my name down. When she starts counting the votes, she, going forward, if we get this in place, you will not count any vote that was not declared. So you can run around and put anybody's name in that you want, but when the clerk sees it, she's going to throw those out if they did not declare. That's what we're trying to change, to make voting a little more fair to the people, you know, for everybody. So that's what, that's about, it's in the hands of legal, so I think, once we get an answer on that, we can bring it back when we're all finished and all, is that okay?
Yes.
Doris, you okay with that?
Good.
All right. The last item, recommended by myself, Article nine, section nine oh five, titled "Council Districts." It appears currently that the district lines seem distorted in regards to crossing the river. Recommended redistricting is required every tenth year per town clerk. Winslow is not reviewed since two thousand and one. Recommendation, bring the districts into alignment. I do know, noticing that District Two, which was originally the south side of the Sebastian Creek River, on each side of Cushman Road and Lithgow Street in that area, I believe, at some point, the lines were moved so that District Two actually comes up Halifax Street Hill, it goes as far down Halifax Street as to where Billido's Garage is located, so I just thought that was really kind of strange to have a boundary across a river and go up another whole section of town. I know that in the last meeting, we, we took initiative on that, and we said we were going to start a committee, I believe, and we haven't really, I don't think anything's really been done with it, but we want to discuss this one.
Right, I think we've got the four people now, thank you, Lee, who are going to be on this committee, so that's moving forward. So I'm sure that'll just get approved, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, there, thank you all for staying awake through that.
My apologies, it took so long.
No, it didn't take long, it was just pretty dry. So, to move on, our next, oh, great, discussion item is the Winslow Library slash Community Center. Mark Armron, Fran Hudson, isn't quite sure why my name was on that. I will say, I will say that Winslow would do, first of all, we're going to have to find out if that's what the people want, right? Do you want a community center? Do you want, some of the ideas that Mark and I talked about was, there's a lot of grants out there and funding for it. One of them, I did get through a resident who, who happens to work for FEMA, that Mark has been in touch with as well. If we made this community center even something as a warming center, you get an awful lot of money from FEMA to build that building. But a community center, we need a new library slash, one section be a community center, and a community center can be so much more than just basketball hoops or anything else, a lot more. And that would be great to get people together, to have ideas on, what are your ideas of what you'd like to see your community center be, and, and, you know, lots of workshops, as our past town manager mentioned in the past. So I think, I'll give it back to you now, Mark.
Yeah, it's, it's, in my vision and ours and others that I've discussed this with, it would be all encompassing. I mean, you know, this is programming for adults as well, it's upskilling for residents in the town, which is a massive plus for anybody that's trying to, you know, push forward and better themselves in their careers and get further certifications and trainings. Again, this is another conversation I've had with people at Thomas College, where they are interested in partnering with us when it comes to something like this. You know, my counterpart over there, or a former colleague that I've been discussing the internships with, you know, she's from out of country, and she's willing to come over and volunteer her own time to do her own programming for, you know, language-based, and, but, yeah, whether it's for the kids, you know, we have ideas for the site where it could be, but again, this is kind of the infancy stages where we're at, that's why we're looking to do this the right way. If we're going to hit the ground, we're going to hit the ground running, but I want to make sure, you know, we're sure-footed and we're actually doing it, and not skipping the process, not rushing the process. So, it really does start with that evaluation committee. I've already spoken to everybody that's going to be a part of that. It could grow, it may involve maybe a couple more hands to be involved. The public's going to be one hundred percent involved in this, so, you know, I really look forward to future conversations, and, yeah, just trying to figure out what we want and what the desire is of the community here. So, it's really exciting. I think the second part of that, too, is connecting the library to that. It just so happens that, you know, the federal government's now releasing, you know, money to libraries and museums again as well, so those grants are opening up again as well. You know, again, we're in the library right now, and this building is, it was never meant to be a long-term library, so my hope is that we could actually get a facility built that really gives the residents everything that they need and some, and I really do think this is achievable, we just need the proper energy, we need buy-in from the public. If this works to what we imagine it could be, I, I hope it's completely funded through grants and just generous donations, you know, so again, we have ideas of where this could go and what we should be tapping into.
Sorry. Question, Steve, did you, what was the final tally as far as that Facebook survey that was done?
I, I have the sheet, it was overwhelmingly, people wanted a library and community center. There were a lot, there were hundreds, there were, I think there were at least a couple hundreds, two eighty? So, two hundred and eighty responses, and, I mean, I would say vast majority, ninety percent of that, wanted to see a library or a community center, or both. So, you know, just kind of for a teaser, you know, the Winslow Junior High, that's a nice spot for a library and a community center. It's close proximity to the schools, I really think that could be beneficial to students and student program in after-school. Again, that's a location where we could put Amanda McCaslin, the Parks and Rec Director, over there, so now she's actually in a central location, has a real spot, instead of working out of a basement in the current, you know, town, town office building. Again, Lisa would have a real library to work out of, you know, ideas that were floating around, the thoughts are, these buildings are going to be, you know, internally connected, but also have their own exterior entrances and exits as well. You know, Fran touched about, touched on the warming and cooling center aspect of it. If we make this an EOC as well, an emergency operations center, through my conversations with the state, there's more grants involved with that, too, so, again, we could really dig deep into this and build something really awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, it also would probably be complementing something like the Muskee Center that they have in Waterville, similar to that, but probably a little bit bigger than that, because we're going to be looking at the library and other things that we can do for, for the community. But we do need the community's involvement in it, we want to hear your input and what you think about it as well. This depends on you people as well.
Next up, parking safety concerns at Halifax Street slash South Grand. It'll touch a little bit on North Grand Street as well. I was approached, not only by the lady that spoke earlier tonight, but a few others of that neighborhood with their safety concerns with the speeding or the drive-through, the four-way intersection Russo and South Grand. Lot of kids traveling in that area, everybody knows if you're from that, that district or that area. Lot of school kids coming, and it's not just the ones that were going to St. John's, but ones walking to the junior high, ones walking back from the high school. But their concerns are pretty legitimate because they're safety issues, and I don't even know how we question that. Those people live there, they see it. I live on a end of a street with a stop sign, I see the California roll-throughs right every day. At least a California roll-through, they're slowing down. So if you, I feel, if you put a stop sign, you're at least going to hinder possibly somebody coming around that corner and getting hit. So I'm in favor of that, I'd love to push for at least one direction stop sign, something. I don't think a yield will work, I think a stop, they do hesitate more, because I know everybody in this room has done a California roll-through. So, I'm in agreeance with that, and the other thing I'm concerned about is, when you pull off from South Grand, and you've got M and M Auto and all the parking, and I'm not saying it's M and M Auto parking, because there's a lot of apartment buildings there, I'm sure people are parking there. So when you're sitting there and you want to come on to Halifax, you cannot see, it's a Hail Mary when you start to pull out. I know, because I almost hit somebody, them doing that, I thought, my God, did they not look before they pulled out? They did, they just couldn't see anything, so it was, I think we should look at, at least putting at least one spot where you put it yellow, no parking, or no parking, you know, from this to here, but we need to save, make it safe so you can pull out of that street. So, I'm not... So, I'm not sure what we can do, if you have any ideas, Paul?
I always have ideas.
Of course you do.
Any of those can be done, I mean, they need an ordinance to be enforceable.
Just need an ordinance?
Need an ordinance. And, like I've talked to Mark, I mean, I would love to see some of this thrown after that safety committee that we supposedly have going, to come back with recommendations and they can decide, do we want one parking space off of South, you know, from South, on Halifax itself, do we want one parking space, do we want two, you know, something...
Do we even have a full committee? Last we spoke, we didn't even have a full committee.
We currently have two residents and then the fire chief and the police chief, we're vacant one position.
I was not invited, but I would serve if you asked me to.
I think, you heard him, everybody heard him.
I can definitely add him.
Yep. So if an ordinance is what you need, do you want an ordinance, or do you want to go through a safety committee first to see?
I'd like to do both on the different, you know, the different aspects. If you want a four-way stop at Russo and South Grand, let's draw up an ordinance. It's a two-step process, you have to...
With a four-way stop, do the ordinance?
But the no parking and that, maybe that should go to the committee, just like, you know, the issues we have on North Grand, you know, that's been thrown out there, some people want speed bumps, some people want something else. There's, there's different solutions, you know?
Of course. This one is just simply pulling on to Halifax, so we're just looking at that.
And that came up, hmm, two years ago. And it kind of lost interest because there was a lot of pushback from some of the...
Well, you're not looking to take all the parking away?
No, but you gotta go back far enough to open it up enough so you can see. One parking space is not enough.
Do you think two of them is?
Two, maybe three.
Yeah. I think it's a safety committee. Paul, the new committee you're on.
Yeah. I'd just like to have, you know, they can also look at, we've had issues in the past with requests for streetlights, you know? Something that the committee can look at and come back to you guys and make a recommendation to try to make it as objective as possible and not, well, you know, this guy pays a lot of taxes, so we'll give him a streetlight, this guy.
Right, making it fair for all.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yep.
I agree.
I think that's great. So what, that's where we'll go with this?
Sorry, Fran, can I add something to that?
You sure can.
I had a constituent reach out to me, she lives on North Grand Street, and she has a special needs child. And she, her concern is the speed on North Grand Street, that she actually lost her cat, and the cat was hit by a car in front of her special needs child. So, she's hoping to get either some speed bumps or maybe do that traffic safety...
The traffic study.
Yeah, the traffic study. Try to get people to slow down in that area.
Oh, I get it, and the thing is, if you're gonna do speed bumps, you gotta do the whole street. You can't just do one.
And I did inform her that at this time of the year, it's probably impossible, it's not happening, correct. So, could you bring that to your safety committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
Because I've seen some other, I saw another solution on the weekend in Southern Maine that might work for a little less money.
Okay.
Could you share that with us?
Basically, I was in Saco on the weekend, and we were going down one, this one main street connects all of the streets, and every street you come to had like an intersection, even if it was only a three-way intersection, they had stop signs on all four, all three corners. So you can't go very far, you have to stop again.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, you know, stop signs are a lot cheaper than speed bumps, they're not in the way in the winter time.
Yep.
Something to look at.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
A different solution that...
Yeah, that's a good idea, Paul.
You know, you take North Grand, you could put one at West Baker, you could put one at Stoby, so you don't give them enough room to pick up speed.
Right, there you go.
I mean, they're gonna run, some of them are gonna run stop signs, they run streetlights, so...
But to that point, you could still throw in at least one speed table or two to offset that as well, if it's necessary.
It becomes, it becomes more of a costly thing and more of a winter maintenance issue because...
It's hard on vehicles too.
I don't want to get into those temporary speed bumps, because then again, that ties up my crews doing something repetitiously that we don't have a whole lot of crew for.
Okay.
I happen to notice that off the Rodrick Road over on Meadowview, that little condo development on the left, as you go down the Rodrick Road, they have speed bumps there, but they're, they seem to be portable.
We already took those out.
You already took them out?
Yeah. And that was because when they had, I'm assuming when we had the construction on Benton Avenue, people started going through Meadowview as a shortcut. I don't see much of a shortcut because it's longer, but anyway, the people apparently are still doing that. But that's an area where we would have to look at, and if we're gonna keep it, we'd have to put some permanent ones, because it's, like I say, it's kind of a pain to put them in and take them out every year.
And when is the safety committee scheduled to meet again?
We have never met, so we'll have to start, we'll have to start that process.
I was gonna ask, can we get some answers before, sooner than later, but at least by the next meeting?
January, January council meeting, yeah, we should go get something.
To get some, to get some, even, I can email you what we discussed so that you can discuss it with them, they can go check it out, and then we can have some answers for the next meeting?
But as far as the ordinance for the stop sign, you can get, you know, we can get that on...
We can do that no matter what.
January meeting for sure.
Okay.
What, for the four-way? Intersection, do you want this four-way stop sign?
Russo and South Grand.
Do we have to approve him to be on the...
I don't think...
Safety committee? Well, any committee, yeah, we do, we have to always, we have to do that.
I don't think we appointed the other two, I think they were just standing...
You have to approve any committee for the town of Winslow.
I think the committee was written that the chiefs were part of the committee, they weren't specifically approved by name, just by position.
I thought any committee in the town of Winslow needs to be appointed or approved.
Appoint him at the next committee, at the next meeting?
No, because he's gonna be working on it this week.
Maybe not this week, next week.
Next week.
He'll have stuff going on this week.
Well, can we do that, suspend the rules? Can we get a vote to suspend the rules to just approve him in case we have to?
I'm sorry, who said that?
So move.
Second.
And a vote to suspend the rules. It's gonna be two-third vote.
So move.
Second.
Second.
A vote.
You're voting on suspending the rules.
Okay, you guys were, so we're suspending the rules to add Paul to the safety committee?
Yes.
Okay, and Mike was the first, Doris was the second?
Yes.
Okay. Doris?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Fran?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
So a motion to suspend the rules passes five to zero.
Can I oppose?
And then I need a motion to appoint Paul.
So move.
Second.
And a vote.
Okay, it was Adam and Lee, right?
Yep.
Okay, Doris?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Okay, motion to appoint Paul to the safety committee passes five to zero.
Good.
Congratulations, Paul.
And I'll get you the information on who's on. Nope, you're here forever. The next three years.
Okay, moving forward, we have community events committee. I want to thank you, Josh, for doing what you did, and also Bushar, right?
Yeah, Corinne and Denise.
And Denise, because I have been thinking about this for so long, and I spoke with, I used to speak with Steve, the past town manager about it, and with Mark as well. I've lived here 40 years, and besides the Fourth of July, there's never been any community involvement, events together, there's just never been. I mean, when I went to school in Winslow for a bit, I marched in a parade down Grand Street playing the clarinet. I mean, you don't have anything to get people to come to Winslow or to get the people of Winslow together. So I thought, there's so many cool ideas you could do that are really relatively inexpensive, and Josh, you know that just putting it out there, you can get a lot. But I'm thinking, Mark and I discussed Easter egg hunts. Winslow's never had their own Easter egg hunt that the town puts on, fairly inexpensive. You could, my thought was you could have a little one for like two-to-five-year-olds at the gazebo, and at the same time have the older kids at the park. Not a lot of parking, not a lot of congestion, and nobody's getting run over. It's just fun things to get people together, the Christmas tree lighting, very good idea. And the decorating, and it's just to bring the community together, to be involved, it's just such a, it's such a, it's a good thing. I mean, hey, let's have a Thanksgiving Day Parade, you know, nobody has those. Just little things, movie night in the park. A lot of Parks and Rec is so busy with Parks and Rec that this is different, in my opinion. This is a committee to, of people who are dedicated, who want the same things, and want to bring families and people together in the community that doesn't cost a lot of money, doesn't cost money. Let's do stuff for fun. And that's why I put it on as a discussion. I'd love to see a committee get going. So I think if you would, Audra, we're gonna put it out, and if anybody's interested in being on this events committee, please contact either myself or Audra, so we can see what we got going and get this town hopping. I see a couple people right off that I'm pretty sure are gonna, there you go. And I thank you both very, very much, it's a very, very nice thing.
You keep forgetting Denise, she's all excited too.
Denise, I'm so sorry, you should have been sitting over there, especially a business, thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, think of a scavenger hunt, where the answers are at all the businesses, where everybody has to go into a business for the first time. I mean, there's just a lot of fun things that people can come up with to make Winslow a happening place.
Do you have an idea on how many people you would like to have on this committee?
Well, it's fun because the more the merrier, right? Or the more, the less work for everybody else. I don't know what a number would be for a committee.
We're supposed to...
I would say...
If they don't work out as a committee, they can be a parade.
Yeah, you can have as many as you want. If you have this many people right now that's interested in it, especially your Christmas tree or anything like that, I think it's the greatest thing we've ever come up with with the people here in Winslow, coming up with something that brings Winslow back together. Love to see it. More hands into it, the better.
Not just back together.
Yeah.
It's on the map.
That's right, just putting it on, out there. I mean, we haven't had anything for a long time. I mean, now that the new bridge is gonna be built, be finished possibly this summer, I think it's gonna be a great thing to do. As far as all you people here, that I'm sure there's other people, Josh, you mentioned you had quite a few people as well, Denise, you said the same thing, and to be able to offer the things that you have, I think it would work out really well. I'm really excited about it, to see it going, absolutely.
I think if you had five to seven people delegating, that would be fabulous.
Yeah.
Well, you can have as many volunteers as you want, but a committee itself...
Correct.
Seven?
Five, seven?
Seven?
Are we doing this like the charter review committee where we have a resolution and they have meetings, and ours is more of a...
It can just be a, it doesn't have to be that, that formal.
I was gonna say, we should work towards that for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add Ray, since you've been part of the...
Just let me wait till January.
Since you've been, since you've been part of that.
Yeah, since you pointed to me, I was thinking, I think that when you go to a committee where you want a lot of diverse people, seven, you know, you might get four at the meeting, if you go 11, especially in a positive thing like that, you get a whole bunch of different, you might get somebody who knows bands, you might get somebody who knows Christmas.
Right.
You can, you can subcommittee it out and then you can go get volunteers for those separate subcommittees. So, 11 might seem like a lot, but when you, when people have schedules and stuff, when you get together, it's nice to have seven there.
I think, I think you said that you probably would be interested in it?
Oh, I...
Thank you, Ray.
I'm doing it now.
Thank you, Ray.
It's great to have...
Thank you.
I have another question in regards to that. Is there going to be a contact counselor on this committee to get things onto the agenda? Fran?
Sure, absolutely, no, I'm very excited about it. So, it's so funny, when I saw you guys posting on social media, I'm like, I'm bringing that up, that's so funny. Yeah, so I was so hoping you'd show up, so thank you very much, both of you, and, I see you.
I just, I think too, that if you look at the Fort Halifax Park and the state, the committee would be encompassing to get, there's a lot of support in town for filling that schedule for the summer. We have some, you know, my organization has three groups that we schedule down there, and there's people in town who like to sponsor the events, and so I think through that group, it would be a coordinated, a good thing to do to fill that schedule for things.
As well as coordinating with Amanda.
I had Denise in Saco, that's how old I am. No, no, you're old, you're young.
Through the chair, that's an important piece too. This coordination would be with Amanda with Parks and Rec as well, and that's something that I've discussed with her and already kind of gave her the heads-up that we're kind of trending in this direction, something that the chair and I have discussed as well. You know, in Pittsfield, every Thursday night in the summertime, there's concerts right there in town at the park, and it is busy every time we go down there. I have a toddler at home, Easter, there was an Easter egg hunt right down the street from our neighborhood. Again, there were hundreds of kids that showed up for it. So, you know, as soon as the chair brought this to my attention, I had this in my mind as well when I took this job on, that it's important for us to get the community kind of buying in, and again, getting these events up and running, and I think it's gonna be a huge success.
I'm excited for it. I do believe that Amanda and the Parks people need to be involved, but I really want it to be community-based.
Absolutely.
You know, the community committee.
Scheduled by Amanda, you know, she'll help schedule times and meetings and whatnot for when...
Right, but the work certainly needs to be, you know, done by the committee for sure, and not just Amanda.
I'm excited, thank you. Now let's go back to the boo hoo. Next one is the British flag at Fort Halifax. Again, I'm sorry, this is my last one. I put that on there because I was approached with the issues people were having with the flag. So I contacted Mike to contact Ray to find out, first of all, why the flag is even there. I didn't know, I'm not sure how many people do know, that that fort was built by the British. It's a British fort. So that explains why the flag is there. The part that's getting people upset is, from what I'm hearing, is that it's flying the same height. It isn't below, I don't think, nobody else can tell either, so it's pretty comparable to being the same height as the American flag, some people are offended by that. It's in a very good location compared to the American flag, because if you're coming down Bay Street, you don't see that American flag, you see the red one, but you don't see the American one, because it's in a bad spot, or the British flag's in a very good spot. Can't do nothing about that either, you can. But I would suggest that you can please people very easily, you can please your group, Ray, and you can...
First of all, if I could say...
Oh, just let me finish, just let me finish. And then you could also please the ones who don't understand or may not agree with the flag being there. I think education is the biggest part. If you educate people why the flag is even there, you're gonna solve a lot of the problem. But if people still have an issue with the way it's hung, then simply move the flag. You don't have to take it away, you don't have to put it away, you don't have to hide it, but maybe lower it a little bit, maybe put it in an encasing, like the thing with the fish, when you go down there, you look and they've got that, I don't know what you call it, little statue thing that tells you all the fish that are in the river, you can look at it, read it, see what's in the water. You could do the same thing, you could get one of those, put the flag, and then put a little history of, this is a British fort, it was this, this is the flag that flew, just to, to give that reference to history, which is all you want to do, Ray, is give that reference of the history, not offend people, and I don't believe anybody thinks you're purposely offending people.
We don't want to. The friends of Fort Halifax don't care if there's a fish flying from that flag. We work with the state and the town, oh, sorry. We work with the state and the town to end with, you know, to educate and to promote to Fort Halifax Park and Fort Halifax Blockhouse, and that's our only intention. Now, how we do that, we always try to get approval through Amanda and through the state of Maine with anything that we ever do down there. So, and I think I stated earlier, zero intention, you know, when we, when we did this, we, like I had mentioned... When we, when we did this, for, we, like I had mentioned, I had tried to get the American flag and the state flag replaced on that fort, fort pole in the spring. And I was unable to get that done through the state. So when we had fall festival days, in October 3rd, about like the week before, we said, why don't we put, you know, for that event, which is a historical event, why don't we put the fort flag up there? And then we put the fort flag up. And then I think we weren't sure, you know, my, my feeling was that we could've taken it down, you know, for the winter. I think all flags should come down in the winter, even though they're illuminated. But we, you know, we didn't. So the fort flag is up there. We've had American flags. We've had fort flags up there. We've had everything. The poles, we matched the pole that was on the fort flag. So I can't remember how high it is, but they're equal height, uh, at least if I recall right. So if you fly the flags up, you know, as high as they go, they would be relatively the same height.
Which people take, people don't like that at all.
That's right. That's right. And I think that's unintentional, you know, uh, and, but we did make the fort flag smaller. But the Friends of Fort Halifax, you know what I mean, we're not promoting that, that the fort flag be there. All we're promoting for, we're a nonprofit.
Right.
Which means we get donations and that's how we do it. We have veterans on our, on our board. We have people that we go through. So we're very conscious. One thing we don't wanna do as a nonprofit is get into a controversy. That is not good for nonprofits that try to do something for the betterment of the fort. You know, we've had palace aid. We've had, we've done interpretive signage down there. We've done granite markers. We've done a lot of things. We keep the fort open. We have an agreement with the state of Maine, which through Amanda and the Friends of Fort Halifax, to open up the blockhouse on a continuous basis all the year. This summer, we had some problems because of drug use in the blockhouse and some of the homeless situations that we had, which you guys, thank goodness, remedied. And it got to be so much better at the end of the year because of that, that we feel confident that we can open up that blockhouse again through the years. But we don't want to say that we want the fort flag up there. We're not that type of an organization. We just want to not offend anybody and keep doing the work that we're doing to promote Fort Halifax Park and Fort Halifax Blockhouse.
And you do a wonderful job. We thank you all for the town of Winslow.
That's all we want. We don't want.
Yep.
We, uh.
I think though that.
We have enough controversy that we don't want, especially in my group, you know, cause every member.
Talk about controversy. Um, we know about the controversy.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
No, it's great what Ray's doing, but, uh, flag etiquette, okay, the way it is right now, it looks like the British flag is the most focal part of all the flags. The American flag's gotta be to your immediate left. When you look, just like that flag there is on the left. If you're looking out here, that flag has gotta be on your left. Okay? So in that instance, it's not right. Flag etiquette is not. They're both at the same level.
If I may, Steve. So you're right about that, but they're not actually positioned together. There is distance between. So that etiquette, although I understand your pers, your perspective there, it's not really applicable for the situation. But I think what we're all agreeing upon is we can find a better place for the flag. Uh, it's important to note that, what was it, 29 states in over seven countries have signed the book going to this park. So it's a hit. It's important that for a historical site, people are seeing it. But again, I think the point is the position of the flag, where it's being flown. I, I think we're all in agreement that we could change that. And that's an easy fix.
Yeah, I mean, put it in the case like she was saying.
Sure.
I mean, and, and, um, you couldn't have a display in there with the history. I mean, he could do that with all the history. So our flag is sitting right above the fort. Because it is an American, American land. It's not British land. I mean, we won the war. I mean, come on here. When I, when I go down that street and it's like, pooh, that red flag's there. The first thing I should be seeing is an American flag that I stand for every day. And all, all military people stand for that flag. You should not be seeing a red flag there. Your first, that's my opinion. And we should do something about it, I think.
I think, I think everybody has got some really good points. I think the town manager and some of the suggestions that have been made. I do believe, the one thing that bothers me is that it's flying the same height as the American flag. No flag should ever be even too. The American flag should be higher than any other flag being flown. But there again, you have to ask, why is it even flying? Cause it wasn't flying before. Or take it and put it up during special events, but then take it down. Um, or the park's closed, take it, take it down. Um, or just encase it. Or put a smaller pole right beside. I don't know, but I'm sure we can please everybody. I'm sure there's a, and that'll be up to Ray.
No, no.
And your group. Your group.
So I'll make it clear.
It's your group.
That is your flag, yeah, the town of Winslow's flag, the town of Winslow's property. And the town of Winslow governs what goes on.
That's not what you just said. You said the state. We have to go through the state for everything.
Yes, but I'm talking about the flagpole over by the monument. So.
The British flag?
No, the, the other one. The monument is where the, uh, the American.
Well, we don't wanna do anything to the American flag.
You don't want to. The fort flag is, you're right, is the state, but, but pretty much with the agreement that we have with the state, okay? They always in the past, okay, have flown the American flag and the state flag underneath that.
Yes.
So like I mentioned in my, in my thing, is that for historical places, the state has said, you can fly the fort flag, you know, or any flag you want in that position that dictates the history of the site. So that's, that's, and, and they've kinda given us permission, the state has, to, and when I talked to Matt Hamilton, to say, well, what do you guys wanna do? It's kinda like, well, we're kinda out of it, but it's up to really, it's up to kinda us to decide, you know, what we wanna fly there and how we wanna display the flags in that, in that area. It's not up to my group.
Well, it is your group that put it there, is what I'm saying. Nobody asked anybody from the town.
I bought the flag. So if you wanna know, I bought that fort flag online. I brought it down to Amanda and I said, Amanda, do whatever you wanna do. If you wanna, I like to have it flown during Fort, Fort Halifax days. And I says, that would be, I think that would be appropriate. We checked with the state and that was appropriate at that point in time. And after that, whether, whether it stays up or not is not up to my group. It's up to, it's up to you guys to decide. Well.
I don't get it. Sorry.
Well, through, through the chair, can I ask you something, Ray? Can we fly the American flag over the top of that British flag?
Hundred percent.
Would that be suffice to, to the people here as you well, Steve? And I think this.
I mean, we've had the American flag and the main flag underneath that fort forever.
So.
I mean, I think the last, when they put that pole up, it might've been 1984.
Which one?
The one right above the fort. And it's always been an American flag there and a main flag. And before that, when Lee Brinkley was in charge of things like that, we used to have American flag on the side of the building. I mean, it was just a short flag, American flag. And then we ended up buying this big flagpole and started putting the American flag up there with the main flag.
Well, I think, since it's not open right now, I think we probably oughta take it down for the season. And then when we do fly it, fly it either with the American flag over the top of it. Uh, I think that would be suffice. Either that or have the British flag under glass with the statement of where it came about to be, this history of it, and have it, put it on top of the fort. So that way, it's always read. And it can be exposed towards, uh, towards a bridge where people will see it, because it's gonna be big enough. And we can put that under glass. Would that be workable?
Oh, I think, I think anything is workable.
And the thing is, it's not flying. We can, we can still do that. And during the time when we have the, the visitors that come in and take a look at the fort and they can see the history, I think that would be feasible for everybody.
Because if we have a president's order to lower the flags, right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna lower our flag at half mast. Well, what about that British flag there?
It's gonna be on the ground.
Yeah, it oughta be.
No, I think probably.
You know, you got flag etiquette that our flag, American flag goes up and down according to the president's order or the governor's order. So that changes the whole outlook of the heist in evidence.
So what do you think, Ray, far as putting it on to the fort?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, whatever. We put.
Why don't we do that?
We just wanna educate people.
Yeah.
That it was a British fort. How we do it. Or how, you know, Amanda and I and the state decide how we're gonna do it. Uh, that's pretty much, you give me some guidelines and we'll go follow those guidelines now.
I think that would be great. Having it under glass, it would be exposed to the people. When they come in, they see the flag that's on the fort, then they, they can see the history of it. And I think it wouldn't be offended to anybody.
Mike has something to say.
Why couldn't you just lower the flag pole by the fort? They already put a brand new one up. You fly the state one, whether it's left or the right, you said it doesn't matter, cause it's too far away.
Too far away.
Too far away.
So just drop that other pole. You don't wanna erase history totally just by putting it on the glass.
No.
The whole point, you know what I mean? I, I really have, I, I know I don't live in the town, but I really have an issue with erasing history. So just drop the flagpole two feet and that would.
Or put it right on top of the building.
Right.
But would it still be seen before the other flags, if it's on top of the building?
Right. So just drop the flagpole down.
I, I, I think for the time being, what we'll do, because it's winter time anyway, we'll take the flag down tomorrow or this week. Uh, and then we'll reassess. And then we could discuss options, Ray, for actually displaying it where everybody can agree on.
I would be so interested in history. Just some history, I think is great.
Pull off the side of it and then hang that off the side of it, so it's still displayed for the fort.
Like a 10-foot pole or something. Doesn't have to be that big.
Not like, I, I was thinking the same thing you were, Mike.
Yeah.
It's close. It's already close. That pole is close. It's just too high.
Now, Ray, that was a different flag as well.
Different.
At that time, correct?
No. That is, that's a fort flag. So that was a fort flag from around 17.
Oh, it is? Okay.
They called it Union Jack.
Yeah, that's a fort flag.
Okay.
That's, it's not like a British, you know, uh, whatever the whole British flag is.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
It's as accurate as we could get.
Okay. All right, so let's do that then. Thank you for participating.
I'm gonna say just one thing, cause I'm all done after this, this one little thing. Um, I want people to keep in mind that all of these discussion items are on here because people brought it to us so that we could put it on here, so you could all get up and speak. So that is your public comment. We didn't take it away. This is how it works. You want something? You wanna speak about something? Contact us. We will put it on. All of these will put on because of people who contacted me. Everyone you see my name on. So I just wanted to make, make people aware of that. Uh, please reach out. And the next one up, and the last one, will be planting an annual Christmas tree to be lit annually.
I wanna thank you, Mrs. Bushy, for bringing that to my attention. I agree with you a hundred percent. Uh, I'm for it. I think this year here was kinda late to be planting a tree. Uh, but I've already talked to Paul. We're looking at possibly planting one in the spring. And I would like your feedback. And I'm, I appreciate the fact that you brought that to me. Uh, I'm for it. All, every, for anything that's gonna go into the community that will bring the community together. I'm for it a hundred percent. I would like to have more information from you as well and what you might have for ideas, so I can pass it on to the other counselors as well as other people. And I think that would be a great idea. But I'm for it a hundred percent. And I think that was, what we'll do is we'll plant a, a tree come this spring. And I've already talked to Mark about it. We've agreed to that. So yeah, thank you very much. Josh, I think very much so that what you're thinking of as far as getting people involved as well is that what you're offering as well, I appreciate everybody here. And thank you so much for, for giving us that input. We really need that input from the people cause we can't do anything unless we get a feedback from you people and it's a positive feedback. Thank you all.
You know, in the middle of that park, there's a beautiful fir tree that would look great. And there's a receptacle one underneath it that would look great in the middle of that park. Have the lights on it, which is already there. It's about 30 feet tall.
Really?
That would look beautiful.
Well, there we go.
We have two weeks.
That'd be the fire department has to go put the strings on.
I can serve. Can you do that, Mike?
What's that?
Congratulations, Mike.
We can't, we can't use a ladder for that.
Can't?
Nope. Talk to MMA about that.
How does Waterville do there?
Waterville does not. Waterville pays someone to do it last time.
Okay, so what's it cost us to put it up?
Might get somebody to donate their bucket truck.
Josh says I'm climbing the chair.
I saw that same tree. I was sitting on Whitfield Street and I was looking over and I'm like, oh man, that'd look amazing lit up. You'd see it from both sides of the river.
So here we go. We already have a tree.
So then, then my next thought was, how are you gonna get anything down there? And how, how well is the soil and stuff? To get something down there to put lights on it. Um, I also wanna add that, there's a woman that just messaged me and she said that, um, she's donated trees in the past for the, next to the police station for the gazebo. She has a 12-foot Christmas tree right now that she wants to donate so that we can put next to the gazebo and put lights on it. How to go move forward with that is really beyond me right now. I don't know if we have the permission. I don't know. So, but these are just thoughts that are coming from the community, which is amazing. So, just wanted to share that.
Yeah. Through the chair. Before you wrap things up, I have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Well, is it a discussion item, Doris?
Hmm.
Because if it's not, you need to put it as a discussion item.
Hmm.
What's it pertaining to?
Well, I just wanted to, it's the reminders. Two reminders.
Well, no, that's fine if you have a reminder. As long as it's a discussion.
It's not a discussion. I wanna remind everyone that you can contact any council member. You don't have to select the one in your district. Contact any one of us. And I do wanna say Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to everyone.
And you had something to say?
Yeah, if that tree is available for us to use, I have a monkey of a son that climbs up 30-foot poles. So it is possible that me and my team could set up and light that tree. I just need to know where I can power it.
Well, Ray would be the one that can tell you where to power it.
It's probably not. I have a lot of Christmas lights.
You do?
Denise already has a team in place.
There may be insurance concerns with sending a child up a tree. We could talk about it. We could talk.
Do we have a waiver?
Anything else, Doris?
No, I just got a kick that Denise already has a team in place.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
I've got one more thing to say. Before we decide what we're gonna do, uh, I'd like to be on the same, maybe committee with the manager, Mark, and, uh, and Ray before we make that decision of what we're gonna do.
About the flag?
What's this for?
About the flag.
Okay.
We're doing a committee for the flag?
No. No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It goes up in discussion.
Well, what you can do through the chair, what you can do is talk to Ray about it and then.
Or you can talk to the town manager, actually.
I can't emphasize enough that it's not the Friends of Fort Halifax decision.
Right.
For the flaggers. So, you know what I mean? So I think, you know, I'll be glad to help Steve or you guys. But I don't want as the Friends of Fort Halifax to be promoting.
Okay.
Thing or another. I think.
Yeah.
Maybe in January. And I'll have my opinion on it, but as far as, I represent my group. And my group wants to, you know what I mean, be, we'd be glad to talk about it and, and converse with it. But I, like I said, I don't wanna be perceived as we're making that decision because we don't, we don't do those type of things.
Okay.
You know what I mean? We just don't do those things.
Where, where are you gonna be town councilman as of January 2nd?
I'll keep reminding you.
Well, I, I wanna thank everybody here today. I wanna wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you for all your input. And I want, I'm hoping that everybody's gonna have a Merry Christmas throughout this whole town. I think this town is coming together pretty well. And thank you very much for all your input. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ditto, ditto. I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All in favor?